All right, it's called the meeting of lawyers, stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with a justice for all.
First off, as you all know, we're gonna have a public hearing tonight on the proposed local law to override the tax levy limit. But before we do that, we need a presentation to the board and the public as to why we need to do this. So if board members want to come out here, welcome them out and, you know, watch it. They can flip through it as well. They have copies. So, okay, so the, yeah, it's like situated here.
All right, I'll sit with the audience. Thank you.
I can stick it in the center. Is that better? Sure, okay. All right, so, um, all right, so this is the, I know this is about our going over the tax cap levy, tax cap limit, but obviously we have just put out the 2024 tentative budget. That was put out on, it was the Friday, September 30th. And the title of this is "A Return to Fiscal Responsibility." So summary of the 1024 budget. We have total proposed expenditures of 14.9 million. If you include the fire districts, we have not gotten the numbers from them yet. That adds, you know, another $1.3 million roughly. We don't control the fire districts. There are separate taxing authority. We just collect the money and turn it over to them every year. The change from FY '23 is a result of contractual obligations and general inflation. There are no new programs or discretionary additions. We basically just essentially took exactly what we're doing this year and we had to adjust it based on a number of conditions. This is fully funding nondiscretionary essential services. The proposed tax rate to pay for these services is 4.96%. Taxes will cover about 66% of the total town budget in 2024. This is a less than $13 per month change for most residents from 2023 levels for home assessed at 300 test. So less than $13 a month in order to pay for everything that we're currently doing. This uses fund balances of about 1.46 million, is roughly 10% of the total expenses. Overall, though, fund balances are still at or below the minimum recommended by the New York State Controller, which is, what, 20%? The county executive, he actually recommends using zero fund balance for operations. And if you looked at his, he gave a presentation recently where he talks about fund balance, why keep the fund balance? Financial stability, cash flow management, financial rating, long-term planning, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The county doesn't use fund balance to balance a budget anymore because they have brought up non-property tax revenues like sales tax and other, you know, taxes and fees that they generate. And so I just want to emphasize this because part of what, you know, we need our fund balances for, when we have severe, you know, rain events, when we have, you know, financial storm clouds on the horizon and, you know, we have issues because, you know, inflation rates are high and the mortgage, you know, the state mortgage tax drops by $200,000 this year projected and a similar amount next year. So we, you know, so you have to have fund balance to be able to absorb these types of shocks. So this is the summary of the process. So the tentative budget was filed with the town clerk on September 29th, posted on the website on Monday, October 3rd. The first budget workshop is going to be October 12th at 7:30 PM. We have to do it after New York Forward. I, you know, I made it that late because I know that goes from 5:30 to 7:30. The budget tentatively have a second budget workshop, number two, for October 24th or October 26th if we need it. You know, approving the tentative budget, that's a TBD. I don't know when that's gonna happen, but we have to do that before we can get on to getting proper notice out and scheduling the public hearing for the preliminary budget, which has to be adopted November 9th or sooner. That's the date. Final budget has to be adopted by, I believe it's November 20th. You didn't correct me if I'm wrong on that date, but I think that's the, um... Okay, so this is a typical tax breakdown for last year. County tax rate's roughly 2.74%. And look, they're able to do that because they have a lot of sales tax and they have other, you know, they have other, you know, non-property tax ways to pay for their budget. So they've managed to do that over time. I hope to be able to do that in a similar manner here in Cornwall, but that's gonna take years because we just didn't focus on economic development in the past. The town tax rate of the current, 4.49%, roughly $25, you know, $2,600, you know, that's what you're paying. School tax rate, which I would say is the lion's share of the tax burden in Cornwall goes to the school district. And so people ask me all the time, you know, "Why are taxes so high, Josh? What are you gonna do about school taxes?" And, you know, what I say is, the only thing we can do is economic development. You know, you build a hotel on Main Street, that throws off $200,000 a year to the school district. You do other things like that, the town can actually help reduce the school tax through smart economic development as well as helping itself. So this, this is the tax burden. So Cornwall needs a sustainable recurring source of revenue to pay for critical operating expenses and infrastructure needs. I've spoken to people out in the community. They want our critical town services intact. The bipartisan 2023 town budget was a first step towards fiscal responsibility. Look, I'm not willing to put our community at risk by further draining our rainy day funds. We tried that once for a one-shot. You know, I'm not gonna promise you tax, you know, cuts that aren't paid for. I'm not gonna rely on one-time budget gimmicks. I'm not gonna do that. We're gonna, you know, do responsible budgeting here. Others may want to play politics with the town budget, but I'm not gonna, you know, worry our future for short-term political gain here. This is a, you know, breakdown of how we pay for services. 66% taxes, 24% non-tax revenues, 10% fund balance. So, you know, you've all seen this. I don't necessarily need to go into this, but the board, you know, you've all seen this and... Not gonna go too much into the weeds on this, but this is the, you know, comparison. So what I want to say is, the entire column on the right, the amount to be raised by tax, that all counts towards the tax cap. All of these, including special districts, except for the fire departments. They don't count towards our tax cap. So if you look at this, you know, this is everything from sanitation to Cornwall lighting to all the sewer districts to all of that. This is included. So when I get to the number in a minute as to what we have to go over in order to pay for everything and to, you know, avoid going over the tax cap, it includes all of these things. Many of these things in the special districts are locked in. It's debt service on, you know, DEC consent ordered mandated projects. I can't touch that or the DEC is gonna fine us $35,000 a day. So right there, you're looking at $300,000 to $400,000 in debt service because of DEC mandated projects that had to start, you know, in the past year and this year and going forward. So that, that's just the special districts. So increases are nondiscretionary. They're, they're a result of contractual obligations. Health insurance, COLAs, union contract raises, state retirement system increases, higher electric and fuel costs, recycling and tipping fees. Tommy, I think that, what, recycling fees have doubled almost?
Quadrupled.
Quadrupled, yeah. So, you know, debt service in special districts for the DEC consent orders. We've got short-term and long-term borrowing costs related to severe weather events and major disasters. We still have not gotten reimbursed from FEMA for that culvert that we had to, you know, to replace over on, you know, Continental from Hurricane Ida, despite moving through that as quickly as possible. So, I mean, look, we're still paying debt service on that. And these storms caused damage. And if you don't have fund balance to be able to deal with it, you've gotta borrow the money, wait to get reimbursed. That's why you need a fund balance, is to be able to not have to borrow money and pay borrowing costs when you have these emergencies. You know, the July 9th flood is only gonna add to this because we've got $3 million in long-term infrastructure that we have to replace because of that storm that we're gonna have to borrow money for because we don't have $3 million sitting in the fund balance somewhere. So, I mean, I guess just to give an example, Deputy Supervisor Gold, just a few of those, you know, increased expenses.
So these are all nondiscretionary expenses and they all contribute to the, to the increase in the budget. Police and fire, fire retirement system is up projected 20%. State retirement up projected 18%. Electricity is up projected 11%. Debt service on, on bonds is up, looks like a $400,000. These are all nondiscretionary expenses that contribute to the bottom line.
Don't forget health insurance, because that's almost, what, $200,000 increase there?
14%.
Yeah.
And, and those are non-negotiable. Those are all nondiscretionary increases.
So the fund balance, so look, we're, uh, we're beginning to rebuild our fund balances, rainy day funds that were depleted in the 2022 post-election budget. In 2023, we started rebuilding the highway and part-town funds, which are needed to support highway department, police, building departments. In 2024, we need to start rebuilding the JNA fund, which funds things like, you know, core services like EMS and everything else, all other public services except for highway, police, building department, et cetera. If we were to stay at the same tax rates, you know, as we had last year, we'd have to cut a half a million dollars out of the JNA fund. Any increases in the JNA fund are all of the fixed contractual obligation. So, I mean, certainly when we get to the budget hearing we're gonna have later this week, I welcome the town board to find a half a million dollars in cuts. You know, have at it, find it. I think we've, you know, done our best of looking to find it, Pam and I. So, you know, it's now the board's turn to try to find a half a mil. So let's let them do it. All right, so next we have, this sort of shows what happened with our fund balances. We actually, so in 2022, we used 2.8 million to balance the budget. That was the post-election surprise budget. In 2023, which was last year, we had to start bringing, bringing it back down to reality and trying to stay with the trend, so we only used about 1.4. This year, we're using 1.4, you know, $1,460 is roughly the fund balance that we would use for this year if everything goes according to plan. So revenue, that's sales tax and that goes to the part-town and highway funds. That's continuing in a positive direction largely because of economic development that's across the community, across the county. Every time somebody goes to Legoland, we get a little piece of that. Every time someone goes to Woodbury Commons, we get a piece of that. Mortgage tax, which funds the JNA fund, which is actually a fund we have to work on this year. We're down projected somewhere between, let's say at least 100, 150, could go as high as 200. We don't know where that's gonna land because that kind of comes in monthly. And so that's partially why we have the issue in the JNA fund is because we have, the mortgage taxes were down. And that's already after we, you know, we actually reduced it last year because we thought they were gonna be down. But we didn't know interest rates were gonna go, you know, in the housing market, 70%, people aren't refinancing, people aren't buying homes, it's all cash deals. And so the similar projected decrease for next year. So not only did we have to, we would've had almost another 150 or 200K in fund balance to be able to reduce the tax levy and the fund balance, but, you know, we just, we just don't have it because it's not coming in. And so next year, we have to reduce the same amount and be responsible. And look, if it's a surprise to the upside, that'll be great next year. But we want to be responsible. We can't count on that. So here's the expenses. So this excludes fire district. So for 14.9 million, you get the same set of services that you have this year. You know, I've reduced that by revenue, sales tax, mortgage, some other, you know, revenues. Fund balance, you know, the 1.4 million, that's the tax levy required to balance the budget. That's the allowed tax cap levy that New York State is saying that we cannot go over, is 8.8 million. So that's the gap, is roughly $1 million. So in order to keep services at current levels, we need to exceed the tax cut or we're gonna have to cut services from the main funds. I don't think we can touch the special districts at all unless you really, you know, unless you wanted to lose sanitation. I just don't, I just don't see how we, you know, can even reduce anything in the special districts at all. So that would leave the main funds. You've got a 0.1 from the four main funds and you're gonna have your public services cut in half. The tax cap level is currently significantly below the increased cost from inflation and contractual obligations. You know, without the grants secured by the town for long-dated infrastructure, the sewer projects, we've gotten WIA grants, we've gotten some other grants. That's state subsidized. They're paying the interest. They've chipped in 25% of the cost of some of these sewer district projects. So the tax burden in the special districts would be even higher without those grants that came in. And in fact, we're, we're continuing to apply for, you know, WIA grants for all of our, you know, sewer projects. And hopefully we're gonna be successful later this year because that'll further reduce the issues in the special district. The, okay, so this basically, you know, shows the trend lines. So as you can see, in 2022, because we basically just drained the rainy day funds to give this one-time tax cut that wasn't paid for, you know, you had this huge drop. But, you know, you know, I'm not a magician. I just can't come up with that same amount of, like, fund balance next year. And so we had to bring taxes back to what they were historically. And then if you may recall from last year's presentation, if you were paying attention, we actually did some long-term planning. We, last year, predicted, you know, based on doing long-term planning, that we were gonna come in at about 4.94% in taxes. We, you know, we said this last year and we were working towards this number because, you know, you're supposed to engage in long-term planning and constantly monitoring the budget. So we were able to stay within what we said it was gonna be last year. It turns out that we're at about 4.96%. So, you know, we're not too far off what we said was gonna happen last year. So we're actually managing the town according to plan. This was the budget that the town board passed last year. And we're managing it according to plan and it's the same, you know, multi-year plan. So we knew exactly what this was gonna be this year. There really should be no surprises at all. So without the 4.96% tax rate, every department would be impacted. I mean, I don't even know how they would function. Although I also don't know because there's also, there's like, you know, union contracts. There's like minimum staffing requirements. So in all likelihood, we really couldn't cut certain departments. So really what you're looking at is, you know, say goodbye to, you know, to staff and pretty much every other department but police and highway and sanitation. Everyone else would have to be, it would just be cut to the bone, say goodbye, they're all gone, all the staff. You know, say goodbye to summer camp. We wouldn't have, you know, summer rec camp, right? You wouldn't have, you know, we can't get rid of ambulance services. That's 300 something thousand dollars a year. We can't get rid of that because that's an essential service. But that's the JNA fund. So if we don't do this in the JNA fund, then we have to, because we can't touch ambulance, you gotta take $300,000 from, you know, one of the departments. So this is the summary of the, of the process here. So look, I have been, obviously, I've been out, I've been talking to residents for the better part of two years, all this year. You know, people contact me, they come in the office, they call, et cetera. It's clear to me that residents want, they do not want major cuts in services. You know, people live here because they value having a fully-staffed police department. They want the best ambulance service in Orange County that has 100% response time, reduced cost. You know, they wanna have, you know, the garbage collection. They wanna have roads plat. They wanna have, you know, parks. You know, we wanna be able to, you know, enforce, you know, code enforcement on bad, you know, bad property owners and landlords. We need to be able to do that to protect our residents. That costs money. So, you know, of course, you know, a few residents, they have reached out and they have brought up these possible ideas. So I think that we, you know, we do need to though, because some residents are, look, any amount of money over what someone's paying, you know, for certain people, that's gonna be a hardship. And so, yes, they would like us to do, to do more with less. I mean, these are some of the, you know, the possible savings that some residents have mentioned. You know, you may, I have received some emails about this. I believe the town board did as well. Reducing garbage collection to one day a week. Merging town and village police departments, reducing police coverage. I don't think any of these things are things that, you know, people want to do. The town and village police departments, that's not even something, that would have to be a village-led, you know, because we don't really have any say over doing that. And I believe they looked at it in the past and it actually wouldn't have yielded much, you know, savings. So, and the garbage collection, reducing down to one day a week. So I believe I mentioned this last year, but the, uh, we did look at the possibility of privatizing garbage collection last year. And it was gonna be a lot more than if we do it in-house. We looked at it. And so, you know, privatizing doesn't work. You go to one day a week and, you know, because the town is so big, it actually takes a couple of days to do the whole town once, plus you gotta do recycling. So unless we're gonna basically, you know, have recycling every other week, you're going to just, you still need the same level of staff, the same trucks. Could you theoretically do this? Yes, but it would probably take, you know, different garbage trucks, bigger cans. It would be a large outlay. I don't know that we would actually realize that much, but I'm open to looking at it. I'm certainly open to looking at it, but it's not, it's not something that we can just do as part of the budget process because it would also require, again, I think, negotiating with the CSEA on this. And so their contract is up next year. So certainly, some of these ideas can be explored after we pass the budget, but I don't think that we can, you know, we can't reduce the tax savings hoping that we're going to reduce, you know, garbage collection down to one day a week. So if that's something the board wants to look at, I'm happy to look at it next year. But that's not something we can really consider as part of this process. You know, you know, look, I mean, as your supervisor, I'm always open to considering the best approach to deliver for Cornwall. So if, if the public wants, I mean, really, if you look at the 25% of the overall tax burden of residents, 99% of that is nondiscretionary. So, you know, ask, you know, ask Pam here, who's a bookkeeper, and she'll tell you that 99% of it is nondiscretionary. If we just start cutting a million out of this, I mean, you're gonna notice. You're not gonna have summer rec camp. You're gonna, I mean, you're gonna have very, very reduced service. And I, I don't know if the residents want that. So I guess what I would say is that, you know, for me, the best way to, you know, come at this is let's do what the county did over many, many years, which is, let's start bringing up the other non-property tax revenues up and reducing the residential down this way. To me, that is the most plausible, but you can't just do it just because you want a tax cut. You can't wish it. You have to plan for it. You have to do it responsibly. So, you know, one of the things, and if we, you know, again, back to what the county exec said, but we want to restore the town's fund balances and reserves to levels recommended by the state controller. The town's policy is 10%. That is just not enough cushion. I mean, look, if we were to go and take another small portion of the fund balance to apply it, then you're getting down to 10. Anything that happens throughout the year, you still have a cushion to absorb, like, shocks of major storms, of economic calamities, of different things. You won't have any for next year, you know, to apply to the budget. So then you have to jack taxes like way up. So, you know, I think that we have to be, you know, just continue on the path of rebuilding our fund balances. You know, we need to monitor the growth of non-property tax revenue, sales tax and mortgage tax. Sales tax is gonna, is most likely just gonna keep going up. I mean, Woodbury Commons is proposing to add, we're gonna have another 300 stores, a hotel. You know, look, we're gonna get a piece of that. So if they build those stores and people spend more money, the town's gonna just keep, you know, benefiting from that. As Legoland expands, we're gonna keep benefiting from that. And then, of course, you know, doing stuff here in Cornwall, you know, if we plan and, you know, we modernize government operations and we have lower energy costs. You know, one of the things that we're doing too is that we are putting in LED streetlights, which, you know, we had started that, Councilmember Scott here, she had been working on that. And so if we get those into place, that will actually save costs over the long term. It'll, it'll also allow us to negotiate the lighting costs and set rates in our lighting districts. If you don't own the light, Central Hudson doesn't let you negotiate the prices or fix them. So this will sort of help us with that. We need to proactively seek grants with local, state and federal partners. I think we've done that and we're gonna continue doing that. We need to partner with, with the county and the state. I think we're doing that. And I think we need to focus like a laser on downtown revitalization and smart economic work. That's gonna grow our sales tax revenue. That's gonna create new commercial tax rateables. That's how you reduce the burden on homeowners. We also need to develop new sources of revenue. So look, we got, uh, the governor just signed a law allowing us to adopt the hotel and tourism facility tax. So that will allow us on, on any accommodations, including short-term rentals, to get up to a 5% tax. And you know what? 100% of that comes to us. We don't have to share that with the county. 100% of that comes to us. And then, of course, you know, don't do stupid stuff. And I say that because, you know, if, it's very important for the town board to, you know, and I'm certainly gonna be like this, but we need to make sure that we do this in a fiscally responsible way. No one-shots, no gimmicks, no, you know, let's not, you know, give tax cuts that we can't pay for, et cetera. Because it only comes back to hurt us in the long run. So, all right, so obviously, you know, you all know about the New York Forward grant. This is geared towards economic development and downtown revitalization. It is not some catch-all recreation grant, you know, to pay for the pool, to pay for other things. We specifically went after this because the plan was, and I said we're gonna plan for lower taxes. If you want lower taxes, you need economic development. And I felt like this would be a way to get some private investment into the community, to get some public projects, but also get some private projects. Because over the long term, this money will come back to us four or five, six, 10 times over the next, like, four to five years in investments. If you look at, you know, what's going on because of this, if we get any of the private projects that have submitted for this, or, you know, if we get, you know, obviously some of the municipal projects, this will repay itself many times over. So obviously, we've got, and then future economic development, we've got the 9W corridor, Route 32, Route 94, Cornwall Social. That's obviously, when that goes in, I mean, think about what you have out there now, abandoned Jennings, you know, nursery that's doing nothing. Once that gets developed and that happens, that property's gonna be generating sales tax. It's gonna be generating more property tax. That's all gonna come here. That's gonna help us. And then, look, this is obviously the Main Street Hotel. So this is, what I would say is the, this is an example of one project. You've got, you know, down at the bottom is, is a benefit just to the town. 150K a year in hotel tax, just to the town. Town property tax, 57,000. So roughly 200,000 a year coming to the town, just to the town. Sales tax, I'm not gonna try to figure out because it's like a complex formula that the county, you know, and it's timed like the population. But it's certainly gonna add. But the, the biggest thing here, I think, is that 150,000 going to the school district. I mean, that's not chump change. So, you know, look, Woodbury's got, what, six hotels going up right now? I don't think Cornwall can handle six hotels, wants that many hotels. And I'm gonna tell you what, like, you know, you have, you know, this hotel, you have Cornwall Social, you have a couple other projects. Pretty soon, you've managed to bring in an extra million dollars a year, 1.5, $2 million a year. That allows you to, you know, to keep taxes dead. Maybe even reduce them if you get the right type of project in here and it gets developed. But we're not looking to, you know, to change our quality of life, but we have to be realistic. If people want to keep what they have, we can't just bury our heads in the sand and hope that taxes are gonna remain stable. Because at some point, we're not gonna be able to generate enough tax revenue to pay for our services that we want without doing any of this. I mean, really, the choice is up to the board, it's up to the public. But, you know, I think we're headed in a very responsible direction. So that's the presentation. I'm gonna pull this out of the way and I think we should open this up to the public to obviously, you know, raise concerns about this. I'm sorry. Thanks, yeah, is there a better spot to put it? Okay, so I guess let's open this up to the public, the public comment.
I, I thought it was a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Public comments.
Yes. Yeah, so, so if there's anyone that would like to make comments on the public hearing, on the record, on the town's proposal to go over the tax cap, please get up, state your name, make your comments. Thank you.
Nancy Bryan. Um, I'm a little disappointed that this is a half hour and the legal notice said that, well, I understand the importance of presenting. Your legal notice said that the public hearing would open at seven P.M., and it's now seven-thirty. So, I, I have a little bit of, a few concerns here. One is the fact that your budget workshop is October twelfth at seven-thirty P.M. You did state that the New York Forward, um, meeting is five-thirty to seven-thirty, and then to run your budget workshop at seven-thirty, I really feel is very inconsiderate for the community and for residents. As far as school taxes go, um, school taxes are high throughout the entire state of New York because of how New York State funds education. And if New York State ever changed how they funded education, the property owners would benefit greatly from that. Also, regarding having to override the tax cap, what you need to remember is, is that when school districts have any desire to override the tax cap, it has to go to a sixty percent or better approval vote.
See, that's what?
That's three out of five at this point.
Excuse me?
Three out of five for this board.
Well, I would assume a majority, but, so for school districts, for school taxes, the community gets to vote on that, okay? So here, while we can voice at a public hearing, we have no vote on what you will finally decide. The three-seventeen Main Street Hotel revenue, I would assume that's based on full occupancy, and it hasn't been approved. I would take a guess, you're not gonna see, if it is approved, you're not gonna see it fully functioning and operational by two thousand and twenty-five, just based on construction and all that sort of stuff. I'm not, I do not support overriding the tax cap. I, I feel that if you have to, it should be much less than four-point-four-six or four-nine percent. I think that's very high. It's not gonna only affect property owners, it will affect renters. We're worried about reasonable housing for people, but when property taxes go up, rents are gonna go up as well, not just what those who own their properties will be paying. We have a plaza that's empty pretty much because of the high rents that, that are being imposed upon those people, and we're certainly hoping that it gets filled and that nobody else moves out. I would hope that all of you on the board are open to suggestions from everyone on the board for possible reductions and not going so high as this because I think that we continue to do this, you're gonna really outprice too many people in this community. And I would certainly hope, one of the things I didn't see cuts in was I didn't see cuts out of the supervisor's office, not the secretarial staff or anything like that, but I would certainly hope that you're not giving yourself a raise and that the town board would remain static where they are. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Yeah, I mean, just the, Madred at Cornwall. It's, it just, I just wanna note that the, the very same voices that oppose any sort of economic development, every idea that's ever pitched by this board, every idea that ever comes forth from any developer, anybody who wants to come and invest money in this town meets resistance, and it's always the same few voices. It's ironic, it's now those same voices that don't wanna do, pass a responsible budget that are gonna insist on cuts to services because that's what's gonna be required if we don't do this. It's just ironic that that's the exact same voice. We're gonna have to do something, like the supervisor said. You can't, you can't just put your head in the sand, you can't just plant your, sort of, plant your feet and expect the world to not change. The world is dynamic, you have to adjust with it. Gas is getting expensive. When the garbage truck or the snowplow puts gas in it, that gas is more expensive than it was at a certain point in the past. If the budget doesn't reflect that, then guess what? We become, there's plenty of towns right here in Orange County that haven't made these adjustments, and you can go visit them. And they're not pretty sights, and I don't wanna live there. So if we don't wanna let Cornwall become that, we have to do the responsible thing now. It's not a lot being asked. Nobody likes paying taxes, I don't like paying taxes, we like to keep our money, I get that. But this is what we have to do. We all know what happened two years ago. There's a big hole in the budget, it's gotta get filled. This is a responsible way to do it.
Yes.
Hi, I, I just, I don't think that, I don't think that everybody is against development. I think what people want to see because of what's been happening is that it's done the right way and not like an overnight sensation thing where there's too many cloak and dagger kind of things going on. People want the board to be transparent. People want the board to act according to the best wishes of the entire community, not, not certain things. You know, I think people do overall like the idea of a hotel or something that's reasonable. And I don't think a three- or five-story hotel in the middle of downtown Cornwall is what's appropriate for the way the town is laid out. I think that because some people may oppose or might think differently about certain things, we're labeled that we're not supportive, that we don't like this, we're naysayers, we always disagree. That's not the case. I think people are just trying to make other people look bad for whatever reason. I have no idea. I will say, I was talking to someone today, and I said, this is not the Cornwall I grew up in. This is not the Cornwall that we all know we can be. It's too dis, divided. People can't even have conversations about things without being labeled against something or, or a naysayer. And I think it's time that all of the board members take stock of that and take stock of what they do and they say to make sure that everybody's voice is heard and that people are included and that people are not just cast away because they don't agree a hundred percent with what's being said. And to go on, on what Nancy said, and I said this last year, you know, no one wants cuts, that's true. No one wants the people who are doing all the hard work to lose their jobs or to have people, you know, sidelined because they can't pay the payroll. The thing that I said last year, and I will still stand by, um, if we're in such dire straits, even though it seems like every other meeting I've attended, except for the last two months, we've had money to do this project, we've had money to do that project, you know, and then, and then all of a sudden, when it comes time to budget time, it's, well, we don't have the money, and we need to, you know, the scare tactics of, we need to have cuts. Okay, so, my question to the board is, if there needs to be cuts made, I think the board needs to have their salaries reduced. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else? Yes.
Steve Jones, Angola Road. First off, I just wanna say to people who said there's not transparency, we just had a presentation about transparency, I felt was pretty transparent. But keep it neutral. We've been having a lot of public engagement, and I feel as if I've been there for most of it. And there's a select few of people who show up. So I would just encourage everybody from both sides, or any side, to come in and express your opinions. Everything's public, everything's out there. So, if that's the feelings from both sides, I would say, come together to the public workshops, come out, let your voice be heard, and then you can say, no one's listening. But until then, there's only a handful of voices that are there. So calm down and speak. That's, that's all I'd say.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna comment, talk about the big hole in the budget in two thousand and twenty-two. Was significant cut in the tax rate, but you can't use that now while preparing two thousand and twenty-four budget because in two thousand and twenty-three, you increased the tax rate by fifty-nine percent, which basically brought it back to the pre-two thousand and twenty-two number. Secondly, I think if you look at the one-point-four surplus that you're looking to apply for the two thousand and twenty-four budget, again, going back before the big tax cut, that was the typical fund balance numbers that we worked with. I think what the town has right now is not a revenue problem, you've got a spending problem. There've been no efforts to control spending throughout this entire year. As a matter of fact, it's been spend, spend, spend. So take a good hard look at the budget, I'm sure you're gonna find places to make some significant cuts and not have to increase the taxes by nearly five percent after a fifty-nine percent increase.
Thank you. Yes, is there anybody else? Yes.
Um, Jody Stein, two twenty Main Street. I always support fund balance because in the situation of myself and my neighbors, if we didn't have a fund balance of our own, we wouldn't have been able to start cleaning up the mess from the flood that we experienced. So, we're still suffering from that, as I'm sure that many people in the town are. And we still need help, like you mentioned, the engineer drawing. So even though we, we personally, you know, need help with our properties and we've voiced that, you know, many times, we still support the town, like the Fall Festival, you know, my practice is very proud, supports that. And, you know, when we're called about the New York Forward project, we're riding our hearts out, you know, so that we can improve the town. But please don't forget that every time it rains, like when the first festival had to get postponed, we're all still sitting here petrified. So, we need help too.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, Ted Warren, Hasbro Avenue. I think it's important that the town makes sure that the residents are aware of the fact that the costs of dealing with extreme weather events are only going to go up. To sort of piggyback on what, um, this person said here. The state is already adjusting on many levels to basically expect these increased costs, and municipalities need to be doing the same thing. This is not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. We've already seen some evidence of it happening, it's just gonna get worse. And so, we need to be, we need to make sure that we're positioned in a place where we can take care of the residents because to believe that we're not gonna have more damage to our infrastructure and we're not gonna need lots of money to repair these damages and sort of counter the other effects from, from the weather events is, you know, not, not very realistic.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? No? Okay, so then, yeah, if I get a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Ms. McAdams?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Ozzy?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so, the, the first item is the proposed local law override the tax libel. And obviously, the board has seen the presentation. You know, we have, there's a certain amount of, you know, time we have. We don't necessarily have to act on this tonight. But in order to get at a preliminary budget that the board is gonna essentially notice and put out to the public and schedule a public hearing on, we need to know that we can go over the tax cap because otherwise, we're cutting one-point-one million dollars. And so, that's what the board's gonna be charged with, so we don't have to do this tonight. I would say the latest that this could really happen would be, you know, at next Tuesday's meeting. We have a budget workshop on Thursday at seven-thirty, and I would say that, you know, the board knows, you know, approximately how much, we have the parameters, we know, you know, if we wanna stay within the current tax rate, we've gotta cut, Pam, what is it, like five-hundred-something thousand out of the JNA fund? That would keep taxes at the same level they are.
You still would have to, you're still going.
We would still have to go, we would still have to go through the tax cap.
Does that include ARPA? ARPA money? Mm-hmm. So we, this year in this budget, we're using ARPA money to fill some of the gaps? Yes. So last year, when I- As a revenue loss. Okay.
So, so you may recall, and-
We did last year too.
So, so, so we applied last year, we took, uh, what, I forgot the exact amount.
It wasn't-
It was a, it was a few hundred thousand in ARPA that we applied to build our fund balance. We were doing the same again this year, taking ARPA to exploit, to apply to expenses, to build our fund balances. So this way, we will have, this will allow us to apply a certain amount this year and to grow our fund balance for next year. So this way, we're not in this position to, I'm completely opposed to bringing our fund balances down to ten percent. To me, that would just be completely reckless, that's at the town's policy. You go below ten percent, and you start getting into where, you know, you're, it, it's just not good. You just can't withstand, um, we need to get above the twenty percent that the comptroller wants, that the county has. That's where we need to be at. And so, that's, that's what I'm proposing. But, um, we don't have to act on this tonight, but I will say, though, that, um, if the board wants to, and we'll get into this, we'll set out, you know, parameters on Thursday. If, you know, if the board wants to stay within the four-point-four-eight percent, it's five-hundred thousand, cut from the JNA fund. I mean, we'll, we'll go through the, you know, Pam and I couldn't, I, look, I couldn't come up with a half a million dollars in cuts without severely impacting service. Maybe the board can find those half a million dollars in cuts. You know, the other amount, um, you know, we will go fund by fund by fund. The special districts, we really can't touch because, again, those are tied to, it's pretty much an in-and-out fund. I mean, you're paying for, if you don't fund those, then people aren't gonna get sewer, lighting, sanitation, whatever. The money goes in, it comes out to pay for the service. So, you know, we'll go over this on, you know, Thursday, let's see what the board, you know, the board can come up with. Because this is a, you know, the board has a role in this too, they, let's see if they've been, come up with some cuts. But I don't believe there's any way to avoid going over the tax cap. So, and the only way to do that is to come up with one-point-one million dollars in cuts. So, you know, the board can start, you know, start that process on Thursday, let's see what we can come up with.
And so, the public could.
Well, I mean, look, obviously, the pub, so the public has had some ideas as well. Some of them are long-term ideas, things that, you know, we can't put into place because they are union contracts, they are, you know, IMAs, they're shared service agreements, they're things that you just can't do overnight. We can work on those for the long term. But, so I think, if the board's in agreement, then we will hold this over till next Tuesday, you know, to allow, you know, to get some more input, have a discussion on Thursday, et cetera, see where we end up. But, I mean, Tuesday's kind of like the X-hour.
Yeah, that'd be wise, take, take the comments from the public.
Yeah.
You know, if we can, uh, the workshop, soon we'll come up with a workshop and come back. I think that's the more, sort of, responsibility that the, I'm the board, I'd be more responsible to do that instead of us, uh, tax cap, but I want.
If I could just say something on that quickly? So, I, I understand Josh's point about where if you want to take the budget, or things it needs to be taken, I should say. But as far as this local law they have before you to, to allow you to exceed the tax cap?
No, it doesn't mean you have to.
It doesn't mean you have to. You're still gonna have a chance to review the budget, you're still gonna be able to vote on the budget. If you determine that there is some way, or that's just what you wanna do, you don't need to exceed, you still got the budget won. So if you wanna put it off and, and think it over, that's just fine. But understand that voting for the local law, put it in place, just gives you the option to be overriding. Obviously, you feel it needs to be done, but the law itself just opens your, your possibilities that it doesn't increase the budget one penny.
No, I understand that. I mean, I'm, I'm, as a commissioner, I'm a board, the five districts, every year we have to pass the tax over line because, so you have that ability if needed. So I totally understand the same.
I just don't want the board-
But, but, no, I understand that, but I also, but I wonder, I just wanna hear the public vote in the field. So, see, I know we can get an emphasis, no. I, I was here, a sense of passion, actually, now, I, we'll do it this next Tuesday.
Sure. Yeah.
Can I just ask for the point of information, Josh?
Yeah.
If you recall, the owners of the three-seventeen Main Street, and also, we as a board supported their application to apply for the Restore New York grant, can you tell us what happened with that? Because now I see them before the New York Forward, and they're asking for a million dollars.
Yeah, I had actually, this had been, I, um, I-
So, I just, do you have any information, like, what happened with the Restore New York?
So, I had, at an earlier meeting, I let the board know, and one of my supervisors updates, I provided that to the public that they did not get the Restore-
Oh, they did not get it?
Yes, they did not get it, and I know the state intends to put it out again, and they would like to apply for it again when it comes out.
Okay, so-
But that is, this is old news at this point, because it was-
I was not clear on that, that's why I'm asking. I was not clear on that, that's why I'm asking. So, thank you.
It was in one of my supervisors' updates.
Again.
In the spring.
I thought we were waiting, so that I, I misunderstood you.
No, maybe it was one of the meetings you, you weren't here, but it wasn't a supervisor's update either.
Okay, okay. Thank you for clarifying. The other thing I want people, the public to know, and I've been holding that saying about this, the sales tax revenue, it goes into a pool that can, the town in Cornwall gets one and a half of one percent of that revenue. So, if you think about all this, the revenue and the businesses and the sales taxes, for all the investment that we do, we get one and a half of one percent. It goes into a pool and it comes back. Am I correct, Pam?
Yeah, but it's a lot of money.
Oh, I absolutely agree, but I want to understand, like everyone thinks like we're going to get, like we're going to do all these businesses on Main Street. But again, it's about, it goes into the pool and we get one and a half of one percent of that money. I, I just want to throw it out there, is that what we get as revenue? Now, do we have another installment coming?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Do you have any kind of?
Four times a year.
Can I, you know, but projected?
No.
Because that also impacts our, our thought process, right?
At the budget meeting, no.
We could talk about that.
Yeah, I think that's, all right, so I just wanted to, thank you Pam, I just wanted to throw that out there.
So, what I would say is that.
It's more than last year.
Oh, and I know the, the.
And so, when, when we put the budget together, because I said we do long-term planning, we take into account projecting what it's going to be, what the trend's been on, and then adding a certain amount that we expect it to be next year. But we want to be conservative because everyone's been saying we're going to be having a recession or something's going to be happening every year. So, I don't want to come in and say, oh, it's going to be five hundred thousand dollars more than it's going to come in and then it's down. No, we're screwed. So, we want to be conservative, but right now, it's millions a year in sales tax that would otherwise have to go to residential property owners. And so, I think what I've said is that the hotel tax, the hotel and tourism facility tax, one project of that size alone is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year just to us. It's substantial. There are, I don't think anyone is saying that, you know, opening a bookstore is going to solve our budget problem, but it's going to make people want to come here and it makes Cornwall more sticky. And when you have a hotel, they stay overnight and then they go to these things on Main Street and it supports the overall economy. So, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I, I agree with you. I just, I do have some preparation in putting all our eggs in one basket because if you recall in the Restore New York presentation, when I asked about, are they going to actually ask for, uh, you know, tax breaks? Right? They said they, they, they were going to do that. So, we're, we're looking at all this supposedly revenue, but we're actually maybe losing because if the, their tax, they're not exempt, right? They have like a pilot, right? Paying in lieu of taxes.
They don't have a pilot.
Well, I, again, when I asked them the question, they said that they weren't going to apply for that.
That is not what they said. Any, any, any business owner.
Well, again.
That's doing a project.
It's your own business.
Has the right to keep all of their options on the table.
Exactly.
But they have not said that. They don't even have an approval yet. And so, what I would say is that.
Wait, but I'm just, I'm just saying, to have this as a big part, like this is going to be all this revenue, I don't want to put all our eggs in one basket.
We're not.
And we're going to get all this from this one project.
This, this is an example of what's possible and I want to be in the, in the world of what's possible and not, and not be negative.
It's not negative, because I'm being pragmatic about it.
I want to be proactive in the future.
There's a difference.
Not negative. So, as we can see with the proactive planning we've done, that's allowed us to project where, where we're going to be. We actually projected last year where we'd be this year with, with the tax rate. And we do this every day. And so, you know.
All right. Again, I'm being pragmatic about it and I'm asking questions that people are asking.
Sure.
And I have, you know, I do have a responsibility in asking these questions.
So then on Thursday, what I would say is.
Last point, if I could. And the taxes, it, it, it goes up, right? We see the tax, like think about some of the businesses on Main Street and their rents and they go up as a result of it too. So, there, um, Steve, maybe you have some information. What percentage of maybe, of the, of the properties on Main Street are owned by the business owners?
What percentage?
Yeah, you have an idea?
I don't have a.
Well, what I'm saying is that you see how that would actually roll over? The landlord is going to pass that on to, you know? I just want to keep that in mind as, as well. I, I am thinking about the businesses because it costs a lot of money to do business. Yeah, so you own your own property, you're one of the few, I think.
And, and you know what I would say about that is having, uh, both paying rent before I own the building and owning a building, that every commercial lease has built in three to four percent inflation to deal with the taxes that are going up. That's just a, that's just a common thing. But really, the biggest burden that I always had, you know, and I still have as a Main Street, you know, building owner, is the school tax. I mean, it's just insane the amount we pay. And that's the biggest one that I've got to deal with. I mean, it was never an issue with the town or even the county. It's always the school. And so, that's what I'm trying to do here is, I want to do economic development to reduce the, the, you know, property tax burden on for, for school taxes. Because I gotta, I hate to, you know, you say it to, but politicians for years have been saying, let's change the way how they pay for schools in Albany and it goes on deaf ears, both parties. It's never going to, it, it has never happened. They always, you know, pay at lip service. So, we got to take care of ourselves here in Cornwall and do this ourselves, not rely on the state assembly, the state senate to do it because they're not going to do it for us. So, we got to take care of ourselves in Cornwall here. Yeah. Oh, sorry, now, sorry, I'll go back to that. Steve just pointed out, we skipped over public comment on agenda items. So, is there anyone that has public comment on the agenda items before we get into the rest of this? No?
Could we get the Girl Scouts here in the start, so, you know, so check them through the pain of this lengthy meeting? Wouldn't it be nice to get them home and get them up front? Ladies first?
I don't think the Girl Scouts are coming, they're just getting something approved of. Yeah, they're, they're not here. This is just two approvals for two events. Okay, yes.
I, I just have one question. I see that there's an item on here and I read the resolution about the speed limit reduction on Angola Road. And, um, I, I feel their pain, but we still haven't fully addressed Mallory Avenue. I almost got hit twice this week and it's not fun, especially if I'm having a bad day and, and I can't walk real fast. I can't crawl. So, just, uh, I'm still waiting for, you know, finish dealing with Mallory Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on if there's no one else. We've got the speed limit reduction on Angola Road. So, I think we all remember that, you know, from previous, in, in September, we've learned that there's a new way to apply for reductions in speed limits. And the process is the town board passes a resolution and we ask the county to, you know, submit paperwork to the state. You know, the, the.
That, that would be the process if it was a county road. This because the county, or county, that adopted it, as Steve said. But it's the county who's going to decide whether this gets passed on to the state or not. And it's a county road, so if we, if you adopt a resolution saying please reduce the speed limit, the county gets it and they have no obligation to pass it on to the state if they say no, it's their road. But if they're willing to do it, then they pass it on to the state. And unlike the old process where it was local municipality had to foot the bill for traffic study, now the DOT is willing to consider it, the state will pay for the traffic study.
Okay.
So, you may be able to actually get it done without going through, you know, all the financial expenses you'd otherwise have. So, that's, that's where we are. But I mean, unlike a town road where they'd be obligated to pass it on to the DOT, this is a request, but at least, you know.
Yeah.
You can.
I mean, we've been, you know, my understanding is that if we submit this, that they're willing to send it up to the state.
The county is.
Yes, yes. Um, now, I've asked the highway superintendent and the police chief on which sections of Angola because we had to get that in here specifically. So, we've got those sections in here. So, there's going to be a, there's, you know, different portions that we're asking them to consider and different, um, speed reductions in here. So, we would, you know, I, I would ask the board to consider and pass this so we can send it to the county. And then we just need to make sure that the county then does what it needs to do, sends it up to the state. And then at that point, um, I think the town board could certainly, you know, working through our state legislators, have them reach out to state DOT and try to get them at least to, you know, do a traffic study. So, you know, and once we get to that point, um, then it's sort of in their hands, similar to Mallory. You know, the town paid for the traffic study at that point. It went up there. They said that it didn't meet the criteria to reduce the speed limit. They didn't reduce the speed limit. You know, we've been down this path, you know, with the speed sign, et cetera. I know in Angola, I, I, um, I would like, you know, at least the board to consider us putting in a speed sign somewhere on Angola, you know, next year. As far as Mallory, I leave that up to the board to decide how they want to, you know, go forward with that. And I believe we looked at this last year. And, you know, in order to, you know, the only other options besides additional speed signs were additional enforcement or doing engineering to do things to the road that would slow traffic down, but then would cause, you know, other sets of issues. So, that's again, something that the board would need to decide if they wanted to.
Are we going for this now?
Well, we are, we are. I mean, we're on a special meeting. But anyway, so I, I would ask the board if they don't have any objections to, you know, do this in a special meeting.
And hopefully, the county would actually, you know, help provide those lines. What was I going to ask that you?
Sounds good. You could do it. There was something I wanted to add to you.
Um, how, how, the sheriff's department, have they been doing any additional coordination with the town?
They said they'd be out there, but they didn't.
They haven't?
Uh, they haven't been there, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I live out there and I haven't seen any evidence of the sheriff. I saw one rolling on my car today.
Okay.
Riding around.
Okay. All right, I did speak with him and he, you know, he, he said that once Cornwall did, he's finding that other municipalities want the same thing on the county roads. So, it's not an isolated problem, but, um, I think that's a good direction. Thank you for all your efforts. During this tonight, we could at least do our part and it's in our control.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can take it as far as we can take it ourselves.
Yes.
Just a shout for Cornwall. Contacted, I'm sure it's a hot topic with them. But it's not. It's not.
Like, did he contact me?
No, I'm listening, you know, a little, like, hey, listen, I have to go out there. I talked to him for some tenants and some tenants come there, but they're going to go out there. Very good. Because they know that we're going to have a private staff too.
I mean, I reached out the second time and he, I think it was Lieutenant Katoni.
Correct.
He, he emailed me that, yep, we've been up there. But, we will continue to, uh, provide the service, but, you know, how much they're actually up there, I don't know.
You've got the whole county and stuff.
Yeah.
So, Joe, how many actions have you prepared in the last three weeks?
On Angola?
Yeah. On Mine Hill, the Johnsons?
I, I'm not sure. I mean, I'd have to look it up, at least in the past few weeks, probably two or three.
But there's a bad one on Mine Hill, the Johnsons, like, about two weeks ago.
Your own springs last week.
Last week.
Yeah, that wasn't very severe though. It was cracked up, it looked worse. Thanks.
Okay. So, all right, so it sounds like we're going to, you know, at least pass this resolution. All right, next we've got the local law building code discussion. I'm going to let Steve just say something about this real quick.
Sure. John Hand and Gary Vincent contacted us in the town office and the city vice earlier this year about a model law that had been promulgated by the state in regard to locally enforcement of New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code and the State Energy Conservation Construction Code. Now, right now, in the town code, Cornwall town code, we have section eighty-four, which has two sections which give blanket authority to the building inspector to enforce the, you know, Form Fire Prevention and Building Code. But it makes no reference to the State Energy Conservation Construction Code. So, we needed an amendment at least for that. I sent to them, gee, you have this section, kind of gives you blanket authority to enforce, you know, the codes now. Other than adding that, why would you want to add anything more? And they explained that the model code, which the state put out, is really much more detailed. It incorporates, um, portions of the Fire Prevention and Safety Code as far as enforcement and as far as things you might have to submit, you know, an application for a building permit and, uh, construction claim requirements, the things along those lines. And they felt that having a much more detailed provision laid out in town code would not only make their jobs easier in terms of administering the code, would also make it easier for people who want to submit applications to understand exactly what it is that's required to submit an application in approvable form. So, I'm just going to walk you really quickly through this draft local law and how it incorporates the model code. Well, I'll, I'll touch on the, the points where it, it kind of overlaps with the existing code if we get it. The first section just updates section eighty-four, as I mentioned, to add the State Energy Conservation Construction Code. The second part of it, Point Roman numeral two, on page two there, is the addition of the model, um, administrative enforcement of New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code and State Energy Conservation Construction Code in the town of Cornwall section. First section is just purpose and intent. Obviously, I just went over the purpose and intent. The definitions are just various terms, your occupancy, code enforcement officer. There are terms used in the course of the, um, statute, or the, I guess this would be code section. And they're just defined here so that people understand what, whatever it is talking about. Section three, which occurs on page five, talks about the duties of the code enforcement officer and inspectors. Now, what the model code does is it assumes that a municipality may want to have different people as their building inspector and their code enforcement officer. Some municipalities do that. The duties kind of overlap, but usually the building inspector is the fellow who's responsible for processing applications to build things and then, you know, how things are constructed. And the code enforcement officer is the person who makes sure that what's out there is in conformance with the code, that there aren't violations of it. There's not inspections more of a violations building inspector or inspections for things that would be running the course of building. But many municipalities have the same person as the building inspector and code enforcement officer. Two titles, one person. And that's the way Cornwall's always operated. And so, I've revised the model code to make the building inspector and code enforcement officer one person because that kind of, kind of reflects what's going on here in the town. So, in the existing code, the town has provisions regarding the building inspector's office, his responsibilities, how to go to him. And in, enacting this other section of the code, since it's a new one fifth, new chapter, one fifty-seven in the code, we had to harmonize those two sections. And there's a number of ways that that could have been done. At the end of the day, what I decided would be best would be just to cross-reference the two sections and say, hey, this is in addition to all those provisions regarding the building inspector. If there's something in here that's a more strict requirement, this will prevail. But that aside, the building inspector's authority remains the same. This is just authority conferred on the same person in his capacity as code enforcement officer and it lays out the things that need to be done. But again, it overlaps very much with what's existing in the code as far as building inspector. It just elaborates on things like what has to be in the building code and so forth. So, you can see in subsection A, there's the first cross-reference to it. Subsection B, as I just said, is of the building inspector's right, we have the powers and duties set forth in town code section one fifty-eight thirty-five and in the town code elsewhere. And then each will also have the additional powers. And it sets forth what code enforcement officer does, so building permits, issue stop work orders, et cetera, et cetera. One fifty-seven four is building permits. I've already touched on that, have us just a more detailed section in terms of applying for a building permit and what it is that needs to be listed. If you look on page seven, you can see that list beginning to come down and it continues over the course of the next couple pages through construction documents, et cetera. One fifty-seven dash five is construction inspections. Again, the building inspector already does construction inspections. He's allowed to do it under the existing provisions of the code. This just gives a more detailed setting, recitation, I should say, of what it is to be building inspecting and what people who are building, who will have to expect the building inspector slash code enforcement officer to look into when it comes to the construction side. One fifty-seven dash six is stop work orders. This is another example of where the existing code says building inspector issues stop work orders. This gives a much more detailed statement of what has to be written in a stop work order, how you serve a stop work order, what the effect of servicing a stop work order is. And it carries over the next two pages. Now, page thirteen, section one fifty-seven dash seven, certificates of occupancy and certificates of compliance. They're basically the same thing. Occupancy is if there's going to be, you know, people within it. Compliance would be if it's, if not, something is going to have to be implemented as far as the way that it's built. And again, it's the exact same things with the building permits. Current code allows for building inspector issues certificates of occupancy, doesn't actually mention certificates of compliance. Um, and this continues that, but again, it lays forth, lays out a much more detailed statement of what you. Um, and this continues that, but again, lays forth, lays out a much more detailed statement of what you need to do in your building in order to get the building inspector slash code enforcement officer to issue you a certificate of occupancy or certificate of compliance. Section one fifty-seven dash eight, this was kind of an odd section. Um, the model code had a provision in it that directs the uh, fire district to provide notice to the building inspector if there's a fire or explosion involving structural damage to any structure within the town. The thing of it is, is you can't, if you're a town, tell a fire chief to do anything. You don't have power over them, and in fact, they'd get a lottery if you tried to do it. So, uh, what we did was we changed this particular section to say that the code enforcement officer will annually send correspondence to each fire district in the town of Cornwall requesting that in the event that there's structural damage to a fire or explosion, that they send notice. They wouldn't have to do it either way if they were the fire chief, but you know, here at least you have something on record saying.
Most functions there.
Here's a code section which, which actually codifies that. Um, one fifty-seven dash nine is actually just a cross-reference to unsafe building proceedings. Um, that's the way it was written in the model code, actually. So, all I had to do was cross-reference the town's unsafe building proceedings. The building inspector slash code enforcement officer initiates them. Um, one fifty-seven dash ten is operating permits. There are certain uses, mostly industrial, which require not only approval from the planning board, but also an operating permit from the building inspector to say that everything is, you know, taken care of, it's safe, there may be flammable materials, there may be processing materials that could result in air pollutants and the like. And this just, again, they already have authority to do this. This just lays out all of the various uses, and it also makes allowance for any other ones the town board subsequently designated.
This is something we don't currently have in place, is an operating permit.
Um, you do not, the planning board doesn't have it. When they get the approval, it goes through them and then the building inspector looks at it. They don't call it an operating permit, but it's, it's basically the same, that the building inspector has to make sure for certain uses that whatever safeguards have been put into place by the site plan are in place.
Because there's an annual operating permit, and I know the building department wants us to put it in there, to place.
This would be that.
Yeah, that they, yeah, this is um.
So, is this renewable?
So, I know.
There's a time limit on it. They have to come back every couple of years.
Oh, all right.
Um, so let's see. One fifty-seven eleven, fire safety and property maintenance inspections. Again, these things already take place. This just lays out how often they're going to be done. Once every twelve months for buildings with assembly areas. Um, at least once every twelve months for public and private schools. Um, once every thirty-six months for multiple dwellings and, and minor residential occupancies. Again, the building inspector, code enforcement officer, well, it's a first here, are already doing these inspections, and they come back and they say this building is unsafe, there's a property maintenance violation there. This just lays out, hey, when do you do these, and when can people expect to get these, and it's a little less than. One fifty-seven dash twelve is complaints. Um, again, we already handle complaints that come in about property maintenance, unsafe building, et cetera, et cetera. This just sets forth, and it's not very long, four paragraphs, how they handle a complaint, if it's appropriate, they issue stop work order, the violation exists, they would issue a notice of violation. One fifty-seven dash thirteen, I guess it's nice to have, but um, it's um, it's all about parking rations. And it goes on for, gosh, gee, four pages. I, I think maybe a one parking garage and a third parking garage. Um, so, I mean, what it says in regard to parking rations is that they deteriorate over time, and it can become dangerous. I mean, God forbid, it would collapse or anything like that. And so, this subjects, I mean, again, they already get inspected periodically in the building inspectors as well, but this subjects them to periodic uh, inspections, and um, they have to provide a report, the owner does, on the condition of the garage. They have to have an engineer go out, take a look and see the concrete isn't chipping away and the pillars aren't rusting through. And they submit the report to the building inspector, and it makes it a little bit easier for him to uh, make sure that the parking rations are in safe condition. Um, but again, I don't know how much play that's gonna get here in the town, maybe a couple of properties. Um, one fifty-seven dash fourteen, um, says that the building inspector is a person who designates the climatic and geographic design criteria for the town. Um, there's a scale of various um, conditions, whether it's weather, or soil, or whatnot, and um, those come into play in planning and construction, particularly under the New York State Energy Code. So, um, the town really should have some designation of, you know, what the big conditions are within the town that builders can know off of. Um, it's something they need to know anyway, and this just codifies the building inspector as the person who made that designation and keep it on file. One fifty-seven dash fifteen is record keeping. Again, the building inspector already has record keeping protocol, but this lays it out, says that they're only going to keep documents for the minimum required by state law so that they can be shredded afterwards, so that you don't have as much storage cost as you may otherwise have. But it's everything from applications to complaints, investigations conducted, and records of fees charged. Um, program review and reporting, just says they'll annually submit to the town board a report on all the activity that they've gone through. They already submit monthly reports to some degree, but this will give the annual review of it. One fifty-seven dash seventeen is violations, which again, overlaps to some extent what we already have in the code as far as building inspector regulations or issuing violations, or if it's unsafe buildings or zoning or whatnot. Um, this is just again, a little bit more detailed. For example, it lays out the wording that should be included in your notice of violation. One fifty-seven dash eighteen, which is the final section, um, just says that all fees charged are going to be in accordance with the scheduled fees that the town board has adopted and maintained. So, that's the uh, the law in a nutshell. And um, we're gonna have any, any questions on that, I guess.
I mean, I mean, the, the big one, I mean, obviously, we've got this whole operating permit, and what type of fee to set on that, um, and how often we're gonna require your businesses to have to do it too. But that's open to us. Um, is it annual, is it bi- you know, is it, you know, every two years, every three years, et cetera? I know we have to give some direction to, you know, the building department, the code enforcement officer on that, because there's been, I wanted, I wanted to say that they said there's at least, what, four to five hundred of these operating permits we're gonna have to do a year, because it's all based on, you know, uh.
I don't think four or five hundred.
I thought it was somewhere in the hundreds, that.
Well, I don't, I mean, oh, John said that to you, and I don't think it's gonna.
Yeah, so I mean, he, he.
Is this sugar house? Is it like maple syrup or something?
Yeah, it's maple syrup.
Actually, I, I really explored it.
I was like, sugar?
Yeah, it's from maple syrup.
Okay.
Um, well, maybe, maybe that's the case, but what I'd suggest there is, if, if the board wants to, you know, if, if you're happy with the way this is drafted, um, you know, you're gonna wanna read it over more carefully, get that. But set a public hearing out, you can ask the building department to give you a memo with suggestions as to what might be appropriate fees. You'll be amending the scheduled fees separately from adopting this anyway, if you have by request.
If they have one change they wanna make.
Okay. Then they can bring it back too, so?
Yeah, they, they have one change, so I guess the question is, we can either ban the, about, we could, you know, have a public hearing, we could, or we could edit in, or, you know, why not, I'll do this. I will forward on to you, and it, it, it has to do with the operating fees. That's like the only part that they need, something in there on. So, why don't I send that, you know, to all of you, and if you feel that it's something we should put in there before we introduce it, you know, we could do that. But it's gonna mean, um, it is gonna mean that the code enforcement officer on a either annual or twice a year or whatever basis will have to go out and, you know, issue operating permits. I believe the town, the town huber started doing that recently too. Um, but um, you know, the, we're gonna have to go out there and start, you know, start doing that, and we'll have to determine what the fee's gonna be. We wouldn't want it to be too onerous, obviously, on businesses. Um, and we'd have to make sure, you know, most of our, yes.
Are there any other municipalities that's doing this, so we can come and look at the numbers?
There must be.
Yeah, you have to do, yeah.
That's an easy way to figure out, but there's work to start with.
Yeah, you know, maybe we can also, too, get the overall, maybe it was not four to five hundred, but it's certainly, it's certainly in the hundreds, 'cause I know you said that it was gonna be a substantial amount each month you was gonna have to do, in order to be able to do it.
Is it John?
Yes. Yeah. Um, it's gonna be more administrative burden on the department, because you're gonna have to do these permits, they'll have to be. So, whatever we have in terms of the, we don't know if that'll impact, you know, um, as you know right now, the building department sort of has, I think it's in the best place it's been in years, it's got, I think, an adequate amount of staff, but we don't know if this is gonna put additional, you know, too much administrative burden on it, so we'll have to, you know, try to get a handle on that. But we'll um, we'll put it back out for next week. We'll get some more details, and then if we're ready to introduce it in schedule of public hearing, we'll do that. Um, okay, so.
Thank you for putting this together, Steve. Bring on us or something, Dave, if you want to.
It was a bear. Um, so, um, all right, next up, we have no shade November. Uh, we do this every year, so they're just asking that we allow them to, you know, not have to, you know, be, well, clean-shaven for the month of November, right?
Somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, do it every year, so I would ask that the, the board, you know, allows them to do that. Um, we also have a training request from the building department, and so they're asking to be able to, uh, John Hand is, is asking to be able to attend the um, four-day training school um, on November fourteenth to November seventeenth, and it is uh, costs a four hundred dollars, so I would ask that we approve that. Um, we also have the Girl Scouts yard sale and Girl Scouts trunk retreat.
Budget workshop.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that, yep, uh, budget workshop. So, yeah, I would ask that we, that we set the budget workshop for this Thursday at seven thirty P M. Um, we can have others, but this should be the first one. Um, we, in fact, we can have as many as we.
We'll just unstick.
It's, it's this, it's this, it's this, it's this Thursday, I.
Right, no, I'm looking at this.
We can do it twenty-fourth and, and twenty-sixth, but I think we just need to know, based on what happens on Thursday, and whether or not we go through the tax cap or not, that's gonna inform how many more of these we have to have. So, I think we.
Seven or seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Yeah, seven thirty.
Just to remind you, you did give us heads up to that, so I have written this long time ago.
Okay.
Yeah, so it wasn't just.
Yeah, I don't, we don't have to pass, we just have to, you know, I'll just have to, I'll have to property notice.
Happening at the same time, so I'll back, there's a few things going on with those.
Uh, seven thirty on the clock.
Yep.
Could you go?
Um, then we have uh, Cornwall Girl Scouts yard sale and the Girl Scouts trunk retreat. So, I would, again, they do this every year. Um, they've provided everything they need to provide, correct? So, I would, you know, we'll, we'll approve this in the special.
Do we know all that, this number?
Yeah.
This is in the cabinet.
We then have a holiday market at Munger Cottage. So, this is something that um, uh, in talking to Phyllis about this, um, the Cornwall Arts Collective came to Phyllis and I, and they would like to have some type of um, arts fair on, it's a small business Saturday, which is the Saturday, you know, after Thanksgiving. And what we kind of came up with is the idea, and this would be a town rec department, um, you know.
Activity.
Similar to the farmer's market. It would, it would, it would be run by Phyllis.
She's come to do this before, I, I remember.
Yeah, so we actually never did, so.
Right, so.
So, so now the way we're kind of, let's see a path forward, is to have, Phyllis is gonna invite some of the farmer's market vendors.
That are artists?
Well, I mean, we have a lot more than the, and, and we've already spoken with Rebecca about this, she's totally.
Okay, so like they would have.
Yeah, we just can't call it a farmer's market, because if you call it a farmer's market, you have to have a produce vendor, and we don't know if we're gonna have one, so if we have one, great, but she's gonna invite all of the, you know, all of the farmer's market vendors, plus the uh, you know, Cornwall uh, Arts Collective members, and then we also have to, you know, um, allow others that are not Cornwall Arts Collective members as well, that sell crafts and other things.
Is this on the calendar? Like a date, you need a date, right?
It would be the, the, the Saturday, it's the.
Oh, I'm not just looking at the date.
Saturday, November.
It is the November twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the, so Black Friday is the, what, twenty-fourth, and then the twenty-fifth would be the, that's the small business. Yeah, I was, I was kinda wanting to fill this with, I'm from France, of course, I talked to her about this and that.
So, with the food vendors and all that, it's gonna turn to a nice little activity for the community?
Yeah, exactly.
They done this before, one of the times, something else ago, I was, I was, I don't know, but they, they had like, you know, some food vendors and some art people, they're on some, or the town, in the color of something, or something else.
Yeah. So, we ask the board, obviously, this'll have to be, you know, if this, you know, it's gonna be a town rec led event um, in partnership with the Arts Collective, but um, once we have, once we kind of get the boards, you know, you'll throw ahead on this, and you know it's clear, we'll start putting it together, you know, get the timing on it, we'll send a flyer around to the board, et cetera. Um, next, uh, state grants. So, Millennium Strategies Farmer's Market Grants. You know, we've um, we signed that contract with Millennium Strategies for the grant portal, and we've been looking at it every month. Um, some of the stuff, some things apply, some things are long shots, et cetera. Um, you know, Tim and I have been really looking at it to see if we can find, you know, different types of grants. I know, obviously, for programs on Riverlight Park, she's really been looking at that. I've been looking at different grants, you know, helping for infrastructure, economic development, different things. And we finally came across one that I think is a no-brainer for us to apply for. Um, it's the New York State Department of Agricultural Markets. It's the Farmer's Market Resiliency Grant Program Round Two, FY twenty-four. And so, um, if we had a market with forty or more vendors, we could ask for a hundred thousand dollars, but our market has under forty, so we can ask for fifty thousand. So, in talking to Phyllis about this, one of the things, you know, there's two possibilities that we would consider, um, if we decide to go for this. And one would be um, the ice house that's next to Ring's Pond. Phyllis would like to um, put in a concrete floor, lighting, maybe there's a way to make it more seasonal so that we could have vendors go inside there, and maybe we could do a winter, a small winter market inside of that ice house. Um, you know, past October, in three parts of the winter. Um, that's one of her ideas. Um, the other that you're allowed to do is you can also use this for marketing, advertising, branding, to try to get more people to come to your farmer's market. So, it's kind of two avenues. You know, we have, you know, over a month to explore both, but one of the proposed projects that we submitted through the Parks Grant that we submitted earlier this year, was also to rehab that same ice house. And it's also in the New York Forward Riverlight Park. So, my feeling is, um, let's submit multiple grants, and if one of them gets funded, well then we get a nice, brand-new, you know, ice house that has a concrete floor, it has lighting, people could use it as a pavilion, they can go in there seasonally, we can have markets in there, we can have, you know, uh, music, concerts, et cetera. Um, but that, that's what Phyllis wants to do as far as, as far as that. If not, we can use it for marketing. Yeah, we had a call today with Millennium, um, yeah, Millennium Grant Writers, like preliminary, to see if it's something that they're gonna get back to us on what the cost would be, 'cause as you know, right now, we're paying for the, for the, yeah, but that was from August through December, and we had ten thousand budgeted for grant running. So, we've obviously, um, have spent the money on the grant service portal, but we have money left to pay for probably two grants, maybe three. Um, I think if we can find a good project, um, and the, the cost to write this isn't that much, I think we should submit. Um, and then obviously, we would uh, you know, and we, well, certainly, I know Phyllis is gonna share this with the farmer's market as well, to kind of see what they have to say about what they might wanna have agreed for, but um, a lot of those vendors have been asking for a winter market. So, if there's a way to do something here that would allow us to have a winter market, or if maybe, you know, spending on the ice house doesn't make sense, and it should be marketing and branding, we'll, we'll do that, but I think, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let kind of, I'm gonna work with Phyllis and the farmer's market, we'll come back to you guys with an idea on this. Um, we then have, let me see, is Mary still back? Um, New York Forward Public Meeting, um, we all know that that's on Thursday at five thirty, so it's on the website. It's the last of the baddest. It's the last of the baddest in the local, you probably saw flyers at the Fall Festival, please come to that, there's gonna be all ten projects, you know, uh, that have been submitted, there's gonna be poster boards, and there's gonna be people on hand to discuss them with the public. So please come, you know, get answers to your questions, uh, meet the project sponsors, et cetera. We also have, okay, so, tax exemption update and discussion, so Maria, our tax assessor, probably the most favorite person in all Cornwall.
I like to say property assessor.
Sorry, sorry, property.
I don't have anything to do with taxes.
So, um, the, 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 um, essentially what we have here, as you know, earlier this year, we, and, yeah, I'll pull all this up out of your head. Yeah, it's in your folder, so as you know, earlier this year, um, we took care of that first responder tax exemption that we did for firefighters and EMS workers, the meat serve criteria, we did that, um, that's in place now. Um, the county still has no way, I believe, to record that, cause they still have to update their systems. The village is working on it now, the biggest bang for, uh, your buck is gonna be the school district, so I don't know whether they're planning on taking that up, I hope they do it soon, but that's really gonna be, the biggest savings would be from the school district on that. I believe they have a plan to take care of it before, you know, the next round of taxes, but, um, yeah, the school district, yeah, they haven't done it yet, um, but we did it, the village is working on it now, I think, uh, I think the county's done it, or they're gonna do it. Every taxing authority can pass that, so that's, that's the first responder tax exemption, we did it, so we're out of the way. If you talk to someone on the school board, maybe ask them to do it. You know, uh, the, but we also have the senior tax exemption, and we have the disability exemption, so if you look at what you currently have here, this is what we currently have in place.
Is the senior exemption saying it's like enhanced star?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, there's three different, um, star exemptions, the first one is just for everybody that makes less than two hundred fifty for a couple, or one fifty for an individual, and then there's the enhanced, which is, you have to be sixty-five years of age, and make less than ninety-eight-seven for adjusted gross, and then there's the third star, which is the senior exemption, and that's on a sliding scale, and that's for low-income seniors.
Okay.
So that's what's being discussed, to change the levels of the senior exemption.
Yeah, do we, do we want to, as well as the, um, for disability exemption, I think you said disability as well, like two or three people in all Cornwall that did that?
No, I think, we only have a few, uh, people with, um.
A few. That's for the disability.
Disability.
Okay, for the senior is actually, what was it, forty-eight?
Forty-eight.
Yeah, of, of different levels.
That's for the town, and for the village, there's twelve.
All right, so sixteen total?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Disability, that was.
It's just the handful.
Okay.
Is that, is it sixteen that, that meets the criteria, that own, that own residence, and also fall to this income bracket?
Yes. That's for town and village.
So what?
So right now, we have, um, for the town, they have to make thirty-seven thousand, three ninety-nine in order to get five percent off their, um, assessment, and if they make less than twenty-nine thousand, they can get fifty percent. So what is proposed, which three towns have done, is one on a gray sheet that you have. The sliding scale starts at five percent at fifty-eight thousand, three ninety-nine, and if they make less than fifty thousand, they get fifty percent off. So that's a significant jump. You don't necessarily have to do that, you could do something in between the forty to forty-eight percent.
What town was this, did you mention what town?
Chester, Town of Newburgh, uh, New Windsor did it a different way, they went zero to forty-two thousand, gets up to fifty.
Washington, what other towns?
No, the only towns that did it are Chester, Waybeyongda, and Newburgh, New Windsor did a flat rate of forty-two thousand and change, and if you make that or less, and that's gross, that's not net, that's gross, um, you get fifty percent across the board.
So this is, well, this is a gross numbers.
So, and I'm not saying we should do this, but certainly, the other towns sought to do this because inflation has majorly eaten into these numbers for seniors, I mean, the people on the lowest incomes in Cornwall. Everything, um, is probably up, you know, you know, it's up a lot, like, what, seven hundred to a thousand dollars a month for a certain size household, that's a lot.
Yeah.
So, so, so the question is, and we have until, I, I think you said, what, by the end of December, if we were gonna do this, we should put this in place, or should, should that happen somehow?
Well, our, our renewals go out, um, in December, and then we have to sign the second notice.
Yeah.
So we'd like to send those out, like, mid-January, um, so if this could be in place, if it's going to be changed, this way we know what to tell the homeowners.
Sure.
But if all of these residents, because they range from five to fifty percent, um, that are in our town, if they were to all get fifty percent, it would be a difference of, I think, twenty-five hundred dollars more in exemptions.
Okay.
For you, um, but then we're still gonna encompass new people that we can't count very far.
Yeah, so obviously this has several, you know, this is one of those things where you do this, and then everyone else pays a little more to make up for it, um, you know, the other, the other municipalities, they obviously, Chester, Newburgh, New Windsor, obviously have much larger commercial tax bases than, than Cornwall does, so it's certainly, and I, you know, the other question that I, I figured the board member would ask, and I tried to find the answer at, there really is no way for us to get exact numbers of how many people in Cornwall are making X amount over the age of sixty-five, I mean, we could look at twenty-twenty census data, but, but that's probably the closest, unless there's like some data service we can get, and I'm sure you could buy data, may, you know, that would, so, it's certainly something we have to consider, cause if it's like hundreds and hundreds of people, I mean, that's a, you know, I mean, you know, if, if we're adding, what, like a, you know, a couple hundred more, times twenty-five hundred, do math, that's how much, you know, so, I think we have to, I think we have to do something, I just don't know how much, because I think this, that this is really low, we, you know, we gotta adjust this for inflation, similar to how people on social security got those, you know, cost of living increases because of inflation, I mean, the, the same thing, we, we probably need to adjust these a little bit. I'd like to try to get more data to be able to make a better informed decision, but I, I don't know that we're gonna have perfect data, so just because we're not, you know, not the IRS, and we're not gonna be able to have exact numbers. So I think, I just think that's something important to look at, um, just real, real quick, I don't know if this ended up making it into your packet, I just at least wanna give this to you for this. Do you have the Cottage Street sanitary sewer, okay, I thought, I, I know that this got sent to you last week by Sean via email. So if you don't have it, um, I'm just gonna pass this around, because this kind of gets after you. This is that special district.
Is it item number fifteen?
No, well, yes, it is, it's, it's items received after final agenda, so this is one of those things where, um, Denise has asked me to cut things off by a certain time, but when things come in after that, so this kind of is fitting into that, or these, you know, is, is this, so, um, as you know, we're currently doing an I N I project in Cornwall Sewer District One, which includes Cottage Street, you've probably seen everything opened up all over town all year, lots of, you know, it's been a very expensive project. As we've gone along and we've started to do this in different places, um, we have, you know, all throughout, there's been different, you know, there's additional work that had to happen on Rosehill Park that we discovered, that we had to recently fix, there's been other, you know, little trouble spots that have taken time, you know, once you're like, you know, spending all this money, you're opening up the ground, you're bound to find problems, and additional things that are gonna cost money. And so, one of the things that we have to deal with is, we have this issue over on Cottage Street, which is over by the cemetery off of, uh, you know, uh, Baylor. It is a private road, but one of the towns, you know, one of the sewer mains goes under Cottage Street, and every time it rains, you've probably been over there, and you see the, you know, we have a, you know, a discharge when you have heavy rains. And part of the I N I project is eliminating the outflow of sewage and the inflow of stormwater into the system. And so this just keeps, you know, reoccurring, and it's happening now, and so we've gotta deal with it, um, it's possible that some of the other work we did, you know, so it's sort of like you're playing whack-a-mole, where you're dealing with the sewers, so you fix something over here, and you fix this, but then the lowest point or the worst part of the system pops up over here, and you gotta deal with that, um, it could be that, you know, when we did the I N I a number of years ago, um, that we missed stuff when we televised the lines, um, maybe there's a whole bunch of stormwater getting in upstream, maybe there's a blockage downstream, but the televising that informed this project happened years before we started the work. And over many years, you know, things happen, right? So we now have to deal with it, and the worst-case scenario on this is that we've basically, you know, if you look at the map, we potentially have an additional two-point-five million dollars being added to this project, because we may have to replace, three, uh, thirty-seven hundred linear feet of existing sewer main, that's the worst-case scenario. Sixty-six lateral replacements, which is another half a million, um, you've got, you know, manholes, pipelining, obviously you have construction contingencies, et cetera, then you have the administration, legal engineering design, that always adds to it, um, yeah, so I was gonna say, this is the worst case, so, so what I'm gonna say is that this is the worst case, the first step to this, which we're gonna start this year, is the televising of behind Cottage and in front of it. So whether it's a blockage, or it is, maybe there are, there are, you know, storm drains that are tied in by accident into the sewer line, as has happened elsewhere, that we've had to fix, maybe there's additional issues where stormwater's getting in, maybe there's a huge blockage all the way at the bottom of it, um, but we don't know, so we've gotta do the televising, and my hope is that this is gonna shrink drastically, and it's gonna be a very small section we have to fix, I really hope so. I guess the only good news of this is that, you know, this would be through the E F C, which is the, you know, the state agency that provides the funding for this project, so we would get lower interest rates, we would get better terms, um, it, but it's still gonna be an additional cost we weren't, um, expecting. And this kind of gets into the whole special district conversation, this is something we have to do, because you're not allowed to have sewage flowing out through a street. So that's one of those things where, like, you add this in, and you have the debt service, you're gonna have to pay the, you're gonna have to, like, pay this. So this is just one of those things where this, like, this affects the tax cap, right, because the sewer district pay, you know, pays it off, so this is just another example of things that just happen that we have to deal with, or it's thirty-five thousand dollars a day and fines.
Josh, if I'm right.
Yeah.
The residents of that area, um, have been very patient, I get a phone call every two weeks from a gentleman named Ray Cop. I can't remember the other guy's name who lives on Cottage, Ray Cop lives on Ferguson. Been calling me every other week, um, I speak to Josh, and I speak to Sean, and we now have something, we, we now have an answer for him, which we haven't had. But they have been very, very patient.
We initially thought this was gonna be, um, when we started this, uh, earlier in the year, we thought it was just gonna be a matter of, like, changing, uh, changing the elevation on the sewer pipe, and, you know, we spent a lot of time looking at it, and we thought it was just gonna be like a simple thing. And it's not a simple thing, it is a, you know, something much more complicated, similar to the Rosehill Park thing, it took us a year to find it, by methodically going through this process, and we ended up finding it, but this is what happens when you do, uh, you know, I N I on the old system, you just find stuff you have to fix. Yes.
So, um, Cottage Street, which is a private road, I know that road is.
Yep.
A mess. It's not, it's, it's just horrific.
It's absolutely a mess.
So who's responsible for, Tommy, who's responsible for maintaining that road?
Not us.
It's not passable, I mean, it, it's also, I think, of.
We've, we've, we've crossed this bridge a few times as our garbage truck goes down it, and, you know, we just paid two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars to that garbage truck, so we don't want it to necessarily go down that road.
So, we can't make them maintain the road?
What we're gonna have to do is, and this is a, this is a broader conversation, is.
I understand that, but, but while we're doing all this and making lots of investments, I think we should also purpose that.
And now that the sewers ran down the road, we're gonna be responsible for fixing it.
So at a minimum, what we're gonna have to do is, we're gonna, at a minimum, once we do this, we're gonna have to put item four in to make it so that they can get down it, and we're gonna have the tam truck here, they can get down it, or like, clean it off. But this, this is a, you know, a look, yes, there is. Um, okay, so, this is, this is. Go, 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 more time.
Is that, that it, um, before we move on, um, I know, look the comments, uh, the tentative agenda, um, the issue that we received, it had, um, item number three was use of town property policy, so what I would like to do is just give fellow board members some of the, I think I gave you one. Updates, uh, to include Sands Ring, and also Homestead, and also can you pass one over to, um, or I'll walk over to, to the.
I think I had asked everyone to give a red line, so I, I pulled it off, because nobody had given me the red lines that I had asked for, before the meeting.
Well, there is, but I have it for you, um, just for you to look at, what I gave is as per, um, my conversations with the town clerk, uh, our conversations regarding, uh, the Sands Ring Homestead, um, I just made some additions in language, so just look at it, we, we don't have to, you know, do any discussion tonight, but, um, I did try to get some of the key language, um, that the town clerk had, uh, requested, and also Sands Ring Homestead, I really wanna emphasize that Sands Ring Homestead is a historical property, and, um, it's only shown to be used for historical purposes, I think that's very important to be clarified. Again, that, I also wanted to include the trustees and the friends, um, they are partners in the, um, historical programs conducted in the property, and just, um, just the utilization, I know, um, for example, I'm a member of the Cornwall Garden Club, we use the outdoor grounds for our means, we apply through the town clerk's office to use it, uh, we have insurance, and that's how, you know, we go about it, so, uh, just look it over, and, um, we'll, that's my red line, but I can't.
Yeah, so what I, what I would ask is that, um, like, ask.
I'll email it to you all again, so you can.
Take, take the ver, and I'll send it out my version, um, uh, go into the comments and, and, and put, you know, your initials, and choose a color, and add in your color of changes, so the board, so the board can see my changes, Tim's changes, that's why we have a red line, so we'll have different initials with different colors, so we can see what's added, and we, that's probably the best.
I kind of, kind of confused.
We can do it, so that's, that's how you walk through edit policies and legislation.
Again.
Okay, um.
And I started the process, so I figure.
So I'll, I'll send the red line out, please, everyone add in their, you know, red lines into that, and we'll, and we'll put out a red line version. Okay.
Thank you.
So, last thing that I wanna just, um, this just literally came in, and I, I'm, you know, sorry that the, you know, the Steins and some of the other neighbors left, but this is a, and, uh, we're not gonna act on this tonight, but I just wanna give this, this is an engineering task order for the Sands Ring Park Drainage Project. So, this is basically, um, would allow the engineer to design, um, a drainage that would help, you know, collect the water that's coming down the hill, collecting in the bottom, um, and allow a smooth way to get all the water out into, um, you know, down into that stream that goes, you know, out the back of the property. As, as you may recall, uh, if we did this, we would bring it up to the property line, this would allow about five or six, um, homeowners and business owners to connect their, whatever drainage ditch or pipe to our, you know, drainage system, and drain the water out. We would have the ability to, um, because this is an improvement to the park, you, you have a ways to pay for this, could use the Sands Ring Cemetery Fund to pay for the, the pipe, and have the highway department do the work, um, after all, we built the park with, uh, Sands Ring Cemetery Fund, to put drainage in. Yeah, well, that's, this is why we have to look at it, um, the highway, uh, D P W would be able to do the work, but we would need to obviously buy the pipe, um, and do it. So that's, that's, that's just, this is just a task order, what it would cost in engineering fees to, you know, to do this, so just putting it out there. Um, don't have to act on it tonight, but I just wanted to get it in front of the board. So just putting it out there, not to act on it tonight, but I just wanted to get it in front of the board.
Thank you for that, but I also think before we put one penny into this either way, we also should see what the county is doing because they made a commitment to actually do some drainage as well. I wanna see what the county is doing before the town invests any money.
So.
Okay, we will.
So the county is doing drainage in its road, we would be doing drainage on the bottom part of the property.
Oh, true, that's true, Josh, but yeah, she just cleared the point.
All right, so good. So. County, it's a county road, they're obligated to fix this.
So, you know, again, I wish they were here, but they will tell you that the county's giving them a commitment to put in, you know, catch basins. They can't say when they're gonna do it.
Right. How much and when are they gonna start work, because after all, we have things.
Based on all of the.
I wanna know the county.
As far as the county's concerned, as well, if we work, we gotta work together, similar to how we.
I wanted to know the county's though.
Yeah. Okay, so is there any, oh, okay, two more things, Steve, sorry about that. So actually, two more things, the, the easements on Sheldon and Robert Road, we're, we're getting pretty close with that?
Very close, I reached out to Steve Drabek again today. He gave me some contact information, we're redoing the, the easements and we contacted the company to make arrangements for title insurance for the next couple of weeks.
In order to get them signed, yeah.
Okay, so this is Sheldon and Robert.
I certainly expect by the end of.
This, yeah, this, you know, this is the drainage ditch that comes down, goes to the lawns.
Right.
Yeah. And then the last thing, just, you know, let everyone know, I've, I'm actually gonna be putting a working group together just to have work on some like, you know, priority projects and different things that are important to the community, like how to deal with the golf course or NEMA, et cetera. So I've, I've extended invites out to, I've, I've invited the former supervisor, Barry Clark, to be a part of that since he dealt with these two projects extensively when he was supervisor, wasn't able to get certain things completed, but he had a lot of good ideas. So I, I've asked him to join this. We'll probably get somebody from the chamber, we'll get someone from EDAC, deputy supervisor, obviously somebody from, probably a different rotating member of the town board based on what we're looking at, because there's different things. But we're gonna get this working group together and, you know, these are two very high priority things that we have to deal with. So, you know, I'm gonna start meeting with them and we will, we will get back to the board with, you know, with, you know, some different proposals and different things, you know, that we can do. Is there any public comments? Yes?
I'm Alsa Cameron and when you were talking about the hotel, I just couldn't help but begin to wonder what you're going to do about parking. Driving along Main Street, it's very difficult a lot of times to even find a parking place for what is already in existence. So I, that's just a big question in my, in my mind that popped in. Next, the Sands Ring Homestead is in our New York State Charter for historic and educational purposes. The next thing is when we put in Sands Ring Park, we didn't change anything with the land, it was just put on the top. So we haven't had anything to do with the rainstorms and the weather that we've had recently that have caused problems at the bottom. And in addition to that, the money that you want to so readily spend from our trust has to go through the Attorney General of New York and it's specifically for the cemetery.
Yes, Steve, is that, is that the case, does it have to go through the Attorney?
Does not have to go through the Attorney General. Does not have to go through the Attorney General.
Pardon?
Doesn't have to go through the Attorney General.
No, I think, I think the point is that, that the, when the park was put in, it didn't alter the lower part of the ground there where the water would naturally flow. So therefore, the trust fund's money should not be used for any kind of drainage work there to solve a problem upstream. And I think that's the point. I'm not saying you shouldn't solve the problem, but you can't take the trust fund money, it's just for the maintenance of the cemetery and all.
I hear what you're saying, unless the, the drainage problem is something that affects the cemetery property, I think there's gonna be an issue with spending the trust fund.
I think that's the point.
But we need to see what the drainage plans show.
Yeah, I think, I think it's like TBD at this point, we gotta see what comes back.
You know, even the superintendent highways who did the work stated at a meeting, recent meeting, that they didn't alter that ground where there was natural flow of water.
It may be the case the money can't come from there, we're just gonna have to see.
Okay, I think that's what probably Alsa's concerned.
Okay, thank you. Is, is there anybody else? Yes?
Oh, real quick, going back to the Angola Road speed limit reduction, I understand you guys are, you know, possibly gonna pass a resolution in this meeting, we're about to ask the state.
Oh, tonight we do tonight.
Tonight, it's tonight.
Oh, it's tonight, okay. Is it only speed reduction that can be looked at or other traffic calming, stop signs, speed bumps, et cetera?
I think this is the first step. This is the first step.
Yeah, what I would say about that is that because it's a county road, the most that the town could do is put up a speed sign and that's the most that we can do, anything else, like speed bumps, anything else, the county would have to sign off on.
Right, but the, 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 the way I understood it, what you're sending to, I guess it's a request you're making to the state?
Yeah.
For, for like an engineering study? Can they only look at speed reduction or can they also look at stop signs, you know?
Speed reduction only. I feel like it's speed reduction only. I just have to be able to add the labor for the one time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I understand that, and that's open, that is only looking at the speed reduction or if there's other things on the table as well, but it sounds like it's just speed.
I mean, I think, I think the first step would be similar to Meller, which we, you know, we went to speed reduction, that didn't happen. Then we went speed sign and then we looked at possibly, you know, the engineering and some of the other pieces. The board decided that at the time, and maybe they changed their mind, that we weren't gonna alter, re-engineer Meller to put in speed bumps and do all of that, but I mean, maybe the board, but in terms of doing that on Angola, the county would have to. I mean, if the speed reduction doesn't happen, we could certainly go to the county and say, all right, can, you know, can the county sheriff have a greater presence? There may be other enforcement options that we'll talk about at another meeting. Maybe there's some other things we can do, but we gotta try. Everyone always says, try the speed reduction first, if that doesn't work, then come back and do the other.
I mean, the section I'm concerned about.
No, I know, it's a.
It's 30, so, and, you know, so it's either enforcement or other.
Well, the section that you talked about, you have, it's 30, you talked about, you know, change, 30 down to 25.
I think you need.
But then you have to have enforcement, so I don't understand.
We've already gone through this in Meller, though, we go down to lower to 25.
So, you know, again, maybe we could convince the county to wanna do some of these things on that stretch where there's all those families. I just think that's a, have to be an outgoing, definitely a speed sign. I mean, I think we could definitely do a speed sign, it's the best one we could do. Okay, is, is, is there anybody else? Yes?
So just to reiterate, Thursday night, Monder Cottage, 5:30 to 7:30. Your public voice, your opinion matters, come down and be heard. Project sponsors will all be there, part of the LPC, the local planning committee. So we want the public engaged, come down, meet the project sponsors, ask them questions, see the schematics, come down. You'll, I think you'll be happy that you did. Another thing that I wanna bring up is Elizabeth Bruschi from the Storm King Theater.
Yes.
She wanted me to make the announcement that she saw that Lemon Building and other places were open to the public and she thought that was a great idea and unfortunately her place wasn't open. So she wanted to accommodate the public to be able to come in and see the theater. So I believe you can see her phone number on Living at Cornwall, we've been doing a Did You Know series to try to keep the public engaged and informed for transparency and education purposes. So you'll find her cell phone number there, you can reach out to her and she will, I believe, before the public workshop, she'll have it open during the day and then she'll make special arrangements for anyone else who couldn't make it and wants to come in and see it. And she also wanted to make a statement that the theater is a public space and she feels like that's not getting enough acknowledgement, that this is, is for the public, so that's it, that's all, so.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's, I guess, just, you know, one other thing I would just say is that, you know, there is, you know, some misinformation out there about these being, you know, having match requirements. They absolutely, these grants do absolutely not require match requirements. Certainly if a private, you know, if anyone wants to provide that, they certainly can, but that's not a requirement. So, you know, any of these projects, no, I mean, the town, we're not being required, you know, to match projects. That's just a complete falsehood, so I just want the public to know that, because that's not true. Despite who may be spreading that out there. Because I, you know, I think it's important for the public, and they'll find this out on Thursday, because we will have the New York Forward team, we'll have the project sponsors, you'll have town and village officials there and we're happy to answer any questions. If you have not gone on the website yet to take a look at all this stuff, please go and take a look at it because it's all there. We're not hiding anything, it is on the website. We've had many, many meetings, yes?
Sorry, supervisor.
Yes.
On our post, we also have links to the Cornwall Forward page that was set up by the New York State itself. So you can go on, it's there for your information, you can engage in a public survey as well that, that is posted on there. And just another point that I hear that's not accurate. The state will be ultimately deciding if it's the final, so it's kind of, this is important, that's why it's so important that the public, if that speaks, because this is our final opportunity for the public to get engaged and get the information up to the state. When they make their decision, it's gonna be their decision.
Okay, so let's move into the special meeting real quick and do this real quickly. Sure.
Two hours.
Yeah, it's not a big idea. I talked about sewer improvements here.
Sewer improvements, right?
Josh, is there a way to plug that?
Yeah, sure, plug it, yeah.
It's like someone's gonna.
No, no, you can, you can, I'll see. I still got three hours, I mean, I could go on another three hours.
Five hours, ten hours on the agenda and it goes like three hours.
We have.
I need to try and tell you something.
No, no, hey, you know, you should try going to like a legislative. But those go on forever and people do get up and go out.
This morning. So. I don't know if there's someone else. I heard him. I think I'll probably reach him tomorrow. It must have been. He's supposed to probably try to. It was. Well, no. Pending the report.
All right, let's go. No, we, we are going, okay, so, special meeting. We are holding off on the, the tax cap override until next Tuesday. First up, we have a resolution for the speed limit reduction of Angola Road, can I get a motion to debate for agreeing on a resolution?
So moved.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Miss Michaelozzi? Yes, Mr. Orde.
Yes. Now therefore may resolve this following, that the town board does hereby request the Orange County Superintendent of Highways to approve the proposed reduction of the speed limit on Angola Road as stated above and that the town board does hereby authorize and direct the town clerk to send a certified copy of this resolution with the applicable New York State Department of Transportation form for the speed limit reduction request to the Orange County Superintendent of Highways under the motion to approve.
Second. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Miss Michaelozzi? Yes, Mr. Orde.
Yes. Next up, can I get approval for the police department to participate in no shade November?
Second. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Miss Michaelozzi? Yes, Mr. Orde.
Yes. Next up, can I get permission to approve the training, the training request for the building department?
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Miss Michaelozzi? Yes, Mr. Orde.
Yes. All right, so we've, we've agreed we're gonna set the public hearing for Thursday, or at least the first public hearing for this Thursday, October 12th at 7:30 PM. I don't even know, I was just gonna do, or should, should we do it via?
7:30 PM?
Okay, all right. Okay.
Seven or seven thirty?
Seven thirty. Okay, next up we have the Cornwall Girl Scouts Yard Sale, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Miss Michaelozzi?
Yes.
Mr. Orde.
Next up, we have the Cornwall Girl Scouts Trunk or Treat at Town Hall, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Miss Michaelozzi?
Yes.
Mr. Orde.
Yes. Next up, can I get a motion to approve the Holiday Market at Monder Cottage?
So moved.
On November 25th, pending, I guess.
Insurance and.
Well, it's, so what we have to do is we will, obviously, the, the arts collective will have to provide insurance that covers their members and the, the farmer's market vendors already have their own insurance, so they can provide that.
I just wanted to make sure.
Pending insurance and, and any fees that we decide to set for this.
Well, I think that if I could just say, I just think, give them an opportunity and see if this grows to something that works.
Sure. And then last. I, I, I thought you guys wanted, I would, I would think you would probably wanna see what the cost is gonna be to write, right? Before we approve it?
For, for the number eight.
Yeah, for the farmer's market, right?
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, no, sure, sure.
Well, we'll put that out next week, I'll, I'll have the amount of the.
But we didn't, we didn't approve the Holiday Market.
Yeah, we did.
We did, yes.
Yeah.
We didn't vote on it.
We didn't vote on it.
Oh, yeah, sorry, can I get a motion to approve the Holiday Market?
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Miss Michaelozzi? Yes.
Yes, okay. Nothing else, can I get a motion to approve warrant number 10?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Miss Michaelozzi?
Yes.
Mr. Orde.
Yes. Is there any public comments before we go into executive session to discuss personnel? No? Okay. Can I get? Yes, so can I get a motion to enter executive session to discuss personnel and a motion to go into closed session to see the advice of council?
So moved. Second. Second. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Ozzy?
Yes.
Yes.